Good question. You're good to hit it Jenny.
Everyone, I'd like to welcome everyone and call the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three Mole Bay area travel council advisory board meeting to order. There's any introduction, so I'll go around. My name is Jenny Gleason, I'm the chair.
Chris Barrett, Grant County, district director of government director, August Grant, Grand County Economic Development Department Director. And then we actually have new staff. Sky, well, I guess I'll introduce you.
I'm Sky White.
They do still here.
Yeah, she'll be a frontline administration of everything.
And did you come from within the county already?
I came from a tea company called the Republican Tea. I've been part of CEO for the last twelve years. So I'm up at Packery, we've been there for about four years, but we lost our house during a fire and we're just dust on the tail end of rebuilding. So now we're really full time, full time. Well, thank you.
My name is Doug.
Mary McGann, Grand County Commission, board member.
Brian Hining, board member.
This is my board member, Lori McFarland, board member.
I want to go internet world, Mark, do you want to go next?
Yeah, hi, everybody. Mark Stephenette with Love Communications. Good to see you all.
Hannah Saunders, Love Communications.
And that would leave Adam Whalen, Love Communications, to round out the Love Crew. Nice to see everybody.
Neil Jones, Moab City Council.
Perfect. Thanks, everyone. So are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or expertise communication? Hearing none, going on to any citizens to be heard, didn't want on Zoom, no one's here. And then presentations are later.
Was no, yeah, there's no in prompt.
And so next go to board member reports, gave about two minutes for everyone to kind of get the updates. We haven't done these in a while, given some time to it. So I'll go first, Redtail, the helicopter was up, good for us, not great, probably. And scenic airplane tours are down still, so we're about flat with twenty nineteen still. Obviously helicopter number is up. And it's not awesome, it's not bad though.
So you were saying the helicopters are up?
Yeah.
What do you mean bookings or the literal helicopters physically in the air flying around?
Well, thankfully, yeah, good point. Numbers are up, numbers are up. And yeah, and then if anyone does not know, really exciting news, hope to be official on the twentieth, Redtail got awarded a grant from the Economic Diversification Fund. One of four and one of fourteen total. So Randy did an awesome job, Tammy did amazing jobs in the airport. So she was a really big help with that and just kind of helping kind of guide that. And the whole discussion about the airline and just that it's not just Grant County, talked about before, it's lots of other counties. And Redtail might even help out Vernal because Vernal is losing their EAS as well as secret cities. So hoping opportunity for Redtail, it's about them, but we're going to start doing service to Salt Lake once SkyWest pulls out in October. October first, they're going to pull out, back on what and. And yeah, we're going to do Tuesday, Thursday, so it's going to be official June twentieth. Yeah, the commission meeting. When it officially voted to go on into beautiful land and so it's really exciting. We got newcomer.
Hi, I'm Alex Worski, board member. I can go maybe after all the. Well, I have a small report. We got the sous tax collections in for March. And transient them tags came in six, six percent above twenty twenty-two, which was surprising to me because. And I go, you know, indicated otherwise in February was putting down. So this pride see TRT come in six percent above twenty twenty-two, so that's good. And all the other sales taxes were similarly about, you know, between four and six percent.
So the sales taxes up too?
Yeah.
For the quarter?
Or the month of March.
What is our quarter like?
Well, I guess I can calculate the quarter. I haven't done it yet, but January and March were above, all combined were above. Twenty twenty-two, but February it was way below, so I'll have to crunch the numbers on the quarter. But I don't know how that shake out. I think February might drag it down. Relative to twenty twenty. It's just the first quarter. But you know, January and February are pretty small amounts of money. So as you know, March onward starts to get considerably more. Like the percentage is anywhere. Yeah, yeah, cool. Um, so I won't talk about things that we're going to talk about today. But things that aren't on the agenda that I think are relevant and stuff going on in department. I'll start with kind of film commission stuff, so. We've been working through a process with the county commission to consider. An opportunity to basically move the film commission outside of our department to a nonprofit entity. That we would continue to fund, have oversight of and get value, ensure that we're getting value from the film commission. But it would also potentially open up other funding sources for the film commission operations. And put the film commission in kind of a more of a, a less governmental structure, I guess would be the way to put it. And so we did a lot to really kind of move that forward in the last month. We had a public forum meeting over at the mark back in May. And had, you know, I think there's a lot of conversation and have been whispers about what was going on and what was good and what was bad. And so that was an opportunity for folks involved, including myself and Vega and Ryan and Derek from the Film Commission. And others to speak to kind of what was on the table or what wasn't on the table because that was on the table yet. But what was being potentially considered. Got a lot of support from that conversation and also a lot of really got nuanced input from the public and I thought that meeting went really well. That information was passed along to the county commission who at their last meeting. Agreed upon a scope or for that kind of a potential arrangement and then has directed affirmatively directed staff to develop a contract. Between the county and the Redcliff Foundation, the nonprofit that is just recently born. And so that's moving forward, but no affirmative decision has been made one way or the other at this point. So that's, that's kind of going on. Film World B is obviously very busy and there's a lot of activity going on. Horizon is in town shooting, a lot of other projects. So I'll, I'll stop there. We could ask questions about that all day unless there's like a super, super, super burning question I'm going to move on. Okay, let's.
Only because I've been getting the question, was there a discussion, and I'm sorry I missed the meeting, was there a discussion about an RFP? To, or to allow like other people to apply for that opportunity or is it just a, I don't, I've had that question, I don't know.
There's, there's been discussion of an RFP, not really with the commission, but definitely a way to go. And it's not off the table yet either. That would have to kind of be up to the county to decide if they wanted to do that. That wasn't what the county motioned to do.
Right.
That makes sense. So I mean, I think that if folks feel like an RFP process should happen, talk to your county commissioner would be my take on that. Technically, we are supposed to acquire to our purchase policy. Yeah. So it's kind of like a gray area, I guess. I mean, it's sort of. Sort of like, I guess we're paying for services. So yeah, I mean. Our purchasing policy says anything over fifty thousand, ask go.
Yeah.
So is it going to an RFP right now? No, could it? Yes. How is that going to happen if you want to pack it? It'd be how I would answer that question.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
It's a little different because we're not. We're, we're continuing to pay for the services we're getting now. It's just going to be in a different place. So it's.
Well, again, I don't want to dive into this too much. Yeah, I mean, I mean. If the commission asks me, I'll give my opinion, but otherwise I'll just stay quiet.
Okay. The good stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's film. And then kind of have last call for economic diversification funds at the next county commission meeting. There is kind of two big buckets that's going towards that. One is, is, you know, we calculated, Chris and I calculated balance of funds that have been collected and will be collected. Counted against expenditures, liabilities and, and serves to figure out how much, you know, money is available. To be spent before the eligible use for that changes on July first as a result of the state law. And so we've been kind of working at nuclear speed to try to. Create a good funding proposal for the balance of those funds, trying to do a public process, do the survey. We had a, the economic development board meeting met and considered a handful of proposals. They made a recommendation that went to the county commission, the county commission. Made a recommendation, asked me to go take that recommendation and turn it into contracts and bring it back to the county commission at the next meeting, next, next Tuesday. So that looks like an additional hundred thousand dollars towards the USU MOAB. Senior business consultant role that we stood up to try to lengthen the sustainability of that role. It includes funding the balance of the career and technical education, student career and success center. That's being proposed by the school district to be put in at the community resource center, former USU MOAB campus. For two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, Redtail charter service to Salt Lake project for ninety-five thousand dollars. And then the balance, which is going to be a little less than four hundred thousand dollars towards one of two basically small business capital funds. One that would be operated by the Southeast Utah Association of Local Governments, that's basically a revolving loan we put in capital. It's, it's there and it's paid out, it's paid in, it's paid out, continues to circulate and serve the community. The other option is going towards the Utah micro level fund, which would basically use that funds as first loss capital and then go fundraise. From the private market to get more than that, to be in a larger pool. So I'm, you know, working really quickly to try to develop executable agreements that the county commission consider their next. And then the last piece is that the selection committee for the strategic planning on RFP. Went through long and extensive and hardworking process, Chris and Jenny were both on that. And made a recommendation or selected a proposal that I have working with the proposy to turn to a contract. And bring to the county commission meeting that next week for better consideration for that process.
What, what is that about?
So that's the, we talked about this, I think, two meetings ago, kind of a holistic strategic planning process to try to answer some of these tough questions around. You know, where are we going with tourism? Where are we going with economic diversification? And start the new paradigm now this, these laws are changing and economic diversification from TRT is no longer going to be an option. There's been a lot of conversation during, during that legislative process about what is our plan? And we've had various planning processes, but we don't, we haven't had a broad based community engagement exercise. We're asking the community, we're talking to subject matter experts and we're trying to understand what does the next factors look like? For MOAB's economy, regardless of if it's a tourism project or based on entrepreneurial exercise. So I'm really excited about it. It's definitely big and weighty and I think there are lots of good questions to be had. And I think the folks on that committee, which also included Lisa Jeffers from the economic development board and. The Winfield from the commission all felt very strongly in the, in the vendor that we are recommending the commission consider. So looking forward to diving more into that as time goes on. But those are kind of my big updates besides what we're going to talk about there. And Sky, super seven.
And this might be for citizens to be heard as the question when we're developing those contracts. I can't think of a better way to invest than in education in our community. I'm hoping that there's an accountability piece that we can really look at what's going well. So we can go with what's going well and then look at what's not working. Sometimes I think we sort of get so busy moving the money forward, we forget to look to see how it does spend. I would propose that that might want to be part of.
Yeah, for every grant contract we spent this year, they all have a recording requirement. For these ones, you know, they're coming from funding that isn't going to exist in the future. And so it is one time funding, although we obviously want to get reports back on impact and that it actually got spent on what it was. So those will be the grant contract for sure. Yeah, that's me.
Yesterday I attended a timed entry update meeting with Park Service, see how things were going this year. And it's going well, even along, you know, the lines of our store out there is going well. Cool. It doesn't seem like the lines are taking as long to get through. They've streamlined a little bit of how they process things going through the gate, so it's better. The issue that they've come up with, because you know, they changed from six AM to seven, eight, seven AM and starting the timed entry. Last year, people weren't getting up at five to get in before six. This year they are getting up before six to get in before seven. So they have a lot more people in the park before the time reservation starts. So the morning hours, there's less tickets available.
Interesting.
So they're still sitting at like a thirty-three percent no show rate. Most of that are the, you know, the biggest no show rate is the, the three to four hour, because that's the last one of the.
Sure. That's the insurance reservation?
Yes. So a lot of, you know, they're figuring, a lot of people are getting earlier ones, but not canceling their three o'clock one. So I know it's, this year they did, they didn't, when they do them the three month in advance release, they're not as releasing as many this year as they did last year. And then more are getting released at the six PM the night before. And it's really helped us at the MEK. Be able to get people reservations for the next day. And then there's also usually some left over. From the night before that we help people in the morning get them for that day. So it's been going really well. We don't have the park rangers in the mix this year at all. But the next staff is amazing. I don't, I, I can't help people on their phones to get their stuff done, but my mixed staff will just boom. They have, and they have a reservation for those people. So it's been really nice. A lot of foreign visitors. Yeah, so a lot of foreign visitors, so that's been really good. And this Thursday, thirty years to make.
Re ribbon cutting.
Re ribbon cutting, doing a re ribbon cutting. Yes.
Three PM, right?
Three PM. Yeah, we'll have some. Yeah, cookies and some free postcards and stuff. To get there early enough, huh? It's just three, we close at five. But, but we have a lecture at five o'clock. With Chris White, she's the NASA ambassador, so she's going to be talking about the. Eclipsees that are coming up. Yeah, she's really good. She used to be a park ranger at that point. So she will be there at five, so. Come get a cookie and a free postcard and if you're there early enough, there's a nice guy, nine minute, I only have seventy-two of them, so. That's, that's about it.
Recluse had a good May, all in all, I mean, we're roughly ten percent off of twenty twenty-two's numbers, but ADR was higher. So dollar wise is about the same. I will say from the star reports that I've seen in Moab. The hotels that are in the survey that I've seen, Moab is roughly around seventy-two percent occupancy. Year over year, that's down. However, keep in mind also there's about seven hundred or hotel rooms that are in operation year over year. So no surprise that TRT would come about the same amount of money. But basically, I think that everybody's seeing more softening in the market. We did have two really good meetings with groups that are interested in coming to Moab. One is the John Wayne Foundation, which does five charity trail runs in various locations that John Wayne has filmed in. They have always wanted to do one in Moab, but have not had much success in getting one up running. So they are targeting early summer, which is a new period for us at least. And it would be good if they come out early June or early July, which is kind of what they're looking at. So they are heavily interested in that. So that would be traditionally, they pulled about six hundred actual runners. For their races, but they have a week long of activities and they bring the entire John Wayne family in. And they do a whole bunch of community based events and stuff like that. So I'm sure that they will probably start reaching out to people here. And then something, I was hoping Vega was going to be here, but it's just something I'm going to put on everybody's radar. I think everybody's aware that Washington County kind of had the, the rules changed for the film incentive tax. They qualified as a rural community. So their film commissioner came out last week to visit the horizon set and came bearing a whole bunch of gifts. Among them, three million dollars to the film as well as a promise of building them a studio in Washington County. So make no bones about it, they are one hundred percent trying to steal the next four movies away from Grand County. And if that doesn't concern people, it should, because I think everybody saw the numbers for Horizon for their first one that. Were directly spending Grand County and that was a significant amount of money, so. They actually came here to try to steal the movie away from them, yeah. That's very audacity.
So the county taxes are going to pay for the studio?
Apparently from what I understand, I don't know where they got the money from, but they basically approached the customer organization and said. We're willing to donate three million dollars to fund your movie. On top of building a studio, on top of getting a state legislature to change the rules that are. Hardball, it's big money though, so. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a player for playing, but. That's it, that's all I got.
Chamber, we've just kind of been doing our own internal stuff for a little bit. We did go on a DC trip. Which was really good, we were there with representatives and their family, with their staff. I got to go with UTEA as well. They were out there for their own flight back and I got to go with them at Needham with Vicki and a few of those people. So, so that was really good. And then we, we've driven cutting, it was on my list to share as well. We just finished up our golf tournament, which was really good and gave away our scholarships for the seniors and all that coming up. We, we have a new office assistant, so we are just kind of, we're kind of doing some revamping with the office and that's what our, what our focus is. As far as businesses go, I'm hearing a lot of, I feel like a lot of mixed reviews, like, so I'm just kind of waiting to see numbers and whatnot. But a lot of concern over the beginning of the, of the year. a lot of concern over the beginning of the, of the year being slow and then some, some reports that it's going up. And I mean, I just we'll, we'll see again.
Grateful to have been able to be invited to uh, Washington DC. I feel like those relationships are really important to our community and um, the outreach there was beneficial, I think, the UTIA opportunities to be with Vicky Barilla and Natalie Randall were really appreciative, appreciated. Um. I feel like the state and southeastern Utah working together can bring uh, more working together than having the opposite. Um. Sales uh, for Memorial Day were good for us. Uh, we're pedaling fast and trying to catch up because the beginning of the year was really tough. Ben.
Uh, pretty similar for us at the restaurant. Yeah, we had a it was a slower start in March and April, but it really picked up in May for us and especially Memorial Weekend. Since then, it's definitely turned a corner. Uh, yeah, probably twenty percent since Memorial Day. Uh, like since May. So our week here last week was way slower than all, all of them in May. So, yeah, trying to figure out how to work our schedule out and trim some, you know, trim costs from the labor and uh keep our fingers crossed. And we definitely had some good days, but it's, it's really, it's more, a lot more hiddenness now. Where you get some like really busy lunch or a busy dinner, but then in between is kind of slow. So you've got to keep your staff going and like be ready for those big pops. But then in the meantime, you kind of the toll of your funds. So uh, you know, just uh, we've had some really good businesses here. Uh, not really spending too much. Uh, we've increased prices a little bit to try to catch up with our, yeah, just the inflation still kind of trying to keep, catch up with that and labor costs. Um, food costs are definitely up uh, just certain items. Like American cheese. More expensive than meat. I don't know how that is, but but uh, it's like things, but uh it's, it's not been too bad. And uh, we've got four more months. We're gonna cruise through June of July, we'll be closed for our, for August. Think uh, last in years past, we've been closed for July, because that's been a bit of a slower time, but last August was like really slow. Really difficult for the staff to get through uh, and manage and definitely I can money in August. So this year we shifted to close in August. And uh, yeah, can I just get ready for fall, get fall season? So I think fall will be really good. Uh, I think generally the summer, I think we and with the weather continuing to be like it is. I think we will see some decent hours for the summer. I think we'll see some regional visitors. The river being up and, you know. Mountains. So that's all, all good things. That's pretty much all I have to say. I don't have anything else.
Alright, um. Thanks, everyone. Next up, love communication update.
And Adam, I think you're the most likely to be brief of all of these presentations. So
I was gonna say, I'd be the most brief. I can both talk fast and I also don't have too much to cover. So yes, let me uh, I'll share my screen here. So I believe it's just a general data update, right? Timelines um, is what you guys want me to cover, right?
Yeah. So I guess um, for the board's sake, um, at the last meeting, y'all voted to recommend to the county commission to um take on uh, or consider the kind of premium version of the data package on the Adam presented. So the county commission approved that. And Adam's gonna provide an implementation timeline, um, so that we have an idea of expectations as to when, you know, our office will start seeing numbers. Um. Reports will be starting to be distributed on a regular basis and when uh, you know, Evergreen always on external dashboard will be um, live, Adam, if you want to.
Yeah. Could you give me a screen sharing permission real quick?
All right, you should be.
There we go. Cool. You guys just seen an Excel sheet?
Yeah.
Cool. So I'm gonna go a little behind the scenes real quick before I talk through this timeline. But like August mentioned, we've been basically kicking everything off. Um, and behind the scenes, we're keeping kind of a full status grid on onboarding all of the data sources. We said we would onboard. But for you guys, I just kind of baked it down into a pretty simple timeline. And then this little box here, and I can zoom in if needed, is basically our key deadlines to the deliverables that August just mentioned. So at the start of this month, we basically began notifying vendors who we've selected, not selected, sending out emails and whatever it might be, and getting all of our contracts finalized and our data pipelines established. So this kind of Gantt chart you're seeing at the top walks through some more nitty gritty uh, details of when things are going to begin. But you can really boil it down into kind of three key deadlines that are broken down at a monthly level. So we're aiming to have all of our internal dashboards that Love and August's team will be using just kind of regularly to check in on things uh, next month. So we already have one data vendor, Placer AI, which is the mobile event tracking, live, good to go. We have an onboarding call um, this week or next with them. And then additionally, this week, we're having our kickoff call with the main dashboard company in Symphony. So the Tourism Economics product that we basically signed on to use. So we're anticipating that will take around four to six weeks, which would put us in line to be able to start providing data, pulling information from dashboards sometime next month, probably middle of the month, if we're being a little more conservative, which is what I would guess. And then ultimately, what that will look like is we will start putting together those monthly reports for the board in August of twenty twenty-three. So just in two months from now. So what that will be is that will be uh, the love team in coordination with, you know, pretty much what questions we want to ask, what we want to look like. Putting together more consolidated kind of like PowerPoint decks of the trends we're seeing. So you know, not everyone has to jump into the dashboards or it's just all of this ethereal data, kind of trying to put it into some cohesive stories and trends. The last piece that was mentioned is the public dashboard, where folks will be able to go to the Grand County website and access the event data, the mobile tracking data, um, the lodging data, whatever it might be. That's tentatively slated for September of twenty twenty-three. So the whole idea of sequencing it this way is we're basically gonna, you know, next month, make sure all the data is being accurately flowed into where we can access it. Make sure that we feel comfortable with what it looks like. Then introduce those kind of reports that can be distributed in August. And then in September, kind of do an assessment on what types of data sources and information we would want available to the public for access, for exporting, whatever it might be. So that's the loose timeline. Like I said, it would be brief. I can stop sharing real quick. But I will give one more quick update that we have signed all contracts. So contractually, we're pretty much ready to go with the exception of lodging data is the main one. Um, but we are looking uh, good. All things are on track with our original timeline and scope. And realistically, you guys should start seeing kind of the fruits of this labor towards the end of next month, maybe middle of next month. But then really in August is when a lot of these numbers will be regularly presented and provided. Any questions or clarification I can provide? I know that was pretty high level.
That was good. Sounds good to me.
Cool. Man, that was the easiest presentation of my entire life. Sweet. Thanks, guys.
I, I, yeah, I, there wasn't a burning question on it. I just, I just got questions from I wanted to follow up on that as that is something that the board did approve at their last meeting and wanted to make sure that there's clarity as to the next steps. Uh. Yeah, do y'all wanna move on to the next um?
Yeah.
Section.
Yep. So that's me. So I'm gonna high level again, walk through the executive summary of the Fly campaign. So I believe the attached on the agenda is the full report. Again, we don't have time to go over the entire thing. Uh, but we're really excited about the results that we are seeing. Um, again, as a reminder, this was our big campaign that started in October all the way through March. Um, and we really leveraged connected TV. So finding our audiences on a large living room screen, programmatic video and display. We had pay per click. So again, as we uh, create that awareness and bring people through the funnel and they're, they're searching specific terms, we're, we're driving that narrative to key landing pages. And so altogether, we were looking at around an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar media buy. And I'm really happy to see the return on ad spend of about ten dollars per one dollar spent. Um, and the next slide will kind of show what that overall revenue to Moab is. But again, the way that we attach our media attribution to hotel revenue is obviously a DARA impact. Again, it's gonna be really great with Adam's robust data so that we can get all of the different information. It can really help our, our markets and our media be more robust. But as we're looking at this impact, again, we drove and influenced about eighteen thousand hotel bookings. You know, just some highlights. Again, TripAdvisor was our main OTA and we saw that they drove a um, an audience that was spending a little bit more than the other um, uh, you know, partners. And so about an eighteen dollar higher ADR. Again, when we look at Sojourne, uh, we were really promoting, uh, um, you know, targeting these main key markets for Fly. So again, we were looking at Chicago, LA, um, and Salt Lake and Denver, really promoting tho- those uh, flights into Moab. And so we were able to influence over, you know, twelve hundred flights directly into those airports. Again, confirmed travelers was around three thousand just for that programmatic partner. And again, you know, when we look just at, you know, Sojourne, they have those travel trends that they're able to optimize towards. Their return on ad spend was a little bit higher than the overall campaign around twelve dollars per one dollar spent. Again, when we look at connected TV, we were able to reach three point eight million households. So that's just under two million uh, video completions with our beautiful video spots. And again, I think video visuals, it's definitely the, the big driver when it comes to pre-roll and connected TV for action and inspiration. And then lastly, for pay per click, you know, we were super efficient with converting those um, audiences at around a twenty um, percent CTR and really driving efficiency for those costs around thirty-seven cents. So what that means when we look at, you know, ho- the hotel impact is again, around eighteen thousand six hundred hotel bookings, um, eight point four million dollars back. Um, so again, we're looking at that about ten dollar to one dollar spent. The average ADR is around two hundred and seventeen. And again, we're always looking at impact in order for us to understanding the difference of the hotel uh, booking window from search to arrival. So that we're able to continue and, and influence those audiences. Um, so again, it's a very helpful tool looking forward. And the last thing that we'll just kind of highlight again, so we felt like this campaign, even though it leveraged, you know, a lot of the different awareness to consideration. Um, you know, channels like connected TV and pre-roll, we still were able to drive a really strong return on ad spend. Again, making sure that this traveler spends more. Um, you know, we were looking at a really strong pre-roll, um, driving ad exposed website visits. Something that's really important for connected TV as well as that we're able to attribute what's website visitation. So we're looking at people who saw your ad on a connected TV advice when they're, when they're streaming. And if they went to your website and that lift between controlled and exposed, and so we're driving again that reach a channel all the way to the website and to visitation. So our future recommendations is to continue, you know, leveraging connected TV or video where we can, where that budget allows us to tie back to hotel bookings. And I can to, to continue to leverage a DARA impact, just so we're able to connect the dots of all of our paid advertising. One thing that I will note is that um, for the Fly campaign, our display post impression rate, again, when someone doesn't see, doesn't click on an ad, but they still go to your website. We are seeing really stronger PIR with our time entry and even our summer campaigns. We're gonna take, you know, kind of those creative optimizations and, and we're obviously consistently learning and adapting in market from campaign to campaign. So we've already seen some really good success with our time entry, which I'm sure we'll share with you um, on the next meeting. That was really high level. Do you have any questions on that? Again, we're really excited about those results. And if you guys dive into the longer report and have any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I read in one of those in the target already audience that we're um, targeting activity um, driven planning. Something like that. And that sometimes that tends to be bigger groups and families. I'm curious if that does that specifically target families or just anyone who's activity driven and it happens to be a majority of families?
Great question. And so we don't have um, a specific persona that's just families. To your point, families naturally are wrapped in into the activity driven planner. Um, and so what we're able to see an impact is the party size. Um, and it doesn't specifically say families, um, but we can dive in and bring up that detail to see if we drove a bigger uh, party size. Um, again, that's more wrapped up into the adventure travelers. We don't have a specific uh, personas, families.
Right.
I can mention though, that we were seeing um, adults forty to forty-nine converting the most. Um, so again, that's a little bit um, about two years millennials, and then it shifts to the other generation. Um, so you would think that families would, would fall within that, that scope.
Well, they should. Okay. And I guess maybe at some point in the future, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of strategy in attracting families, um, you know, as residents. A lot of people that you hear are like, oh, I came to visit and I loved it. So I wanted to stay. And I feel like economic department wise, we're like in need of families to move in. And so maybe we could, you know, merge those strategies a little bit.
I think that's a perfect situation to be had during that planning process.
Yeah.
To advantage their car.
That's the story of the night. Car broke down and I never.
Right, exactly.
But yeah, just some, just some cooperative.
Drive business. The garages just
Yeah.
deploy the kids to go break cars home. Sorry. Good, good, well taken.
Absolutely. Okay. I believe the next agenda item is co-op. I'm not sure, August, if you want to set that up before I kind of present our strategy?
Um, yeah, unless there's any other questions on either the data piece or the, the fast campaign reporting on today.
Do we have any comparison from previous year the pilot timed entry to this year pilot timed entry? To see if we're having people be more interested and responsive and clicking on that. Do we?
Well, this year's campaign, I don't think is over yet. Uh, so we don't have, is that right? Our current year is not over yet. So we don't have a final report.
Yep, it's wrapping up. And so we still have that attribution window. So I believe next month we'll be able to compare. Um, and again, our time entry campaign was a little bit less in budget. So what we're looking at is kind of like rates to compare apples to apples.
So, yes, at a later meeting.
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct. Yep.
And then for reference, uh, this board doesn't meet in July unless you elect to, which you could elect to, but um, so that would happen at the August camp. Unless you decide to have a beach line. Uh, yeah, so let's go to co-op. So um, talked about that. We've been talking about this. Um, the Cooperative Marketing Grant for Bram is uh, run by the State Office of Tourism, funded by the state legislature. Um, and provides an opportunity for the state to advance its tourism goals um, by supporting communities, by letting communities kind of drive what the projects they would like to do. It's a one-to-one match. Um, and the max you can request is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and uh, we typically go for the max. So, so kind of the important things to keep in mind is that um, there is, there is limits on how much we can spend in state on this program uh, in terms of actual markets and audiences that we're reaching out to. Um, and uh, there's also kind of new rules about bringing in that forever mighty message. It's kind of relatively new in the last couple of years. And then um, kind of from the county's planning standpoint, basically, this is additional money coming in on that more or less increase the total budget. And so if there's a project that we want to have happen and we're, you know, we're eating up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of our intentional, intended marketing spend next year. If we get this grant money, that two hundred and fifty thousand can be spent on a different project, if that makes sense. So, you know, by getting the most money out of this possible, it, it allows us to be flexible with the dollars that we have that aren't tied to one program or another. So you know, our department sees very strongly that going after the most money from this is, is a method for our department. Um. And that with that in mind, last conversation we had was um, you know, kind of with regards to this conversation of should we kind of aim for a more traditional marketing oriented um, plan or kind of a more kind of media educational um, campaign. Um, and so in, in looking at how the State Office of Tourism kind of in the board, what they're, what they want to get out of this program and what they funded the most. You know, we want to go towards a You know, we want to go towards a basically helping to fund next year's version of the summer marketing campaign that we're doing this year. Um, and so that's what we've asked um, Love to Scope out as a project to be funded. So that's not to say this is the only, you know, bad camp, and it's not to say it's the only piece of media, it's not to say it's the only, you know, that we're not going to do any responsible recreation, but that this is, we think, the most viable um, container to get the most amount of money, um, to get the most value to the community within this program. Um, so it's due on our end by June thirtieth. Um, and we need letters of support from this board. We need a commitment from the county for the match money. So that'll be coming up at their at their next meeting. Um, and so what Love has prepared is kind of the bulk of what's actually what we'd like to put into an application. Um, but it's not concrete, so if there's any input or revisions, um, this would be the time to 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 do that. Um, we were hoping to draft a letter of support, um, and I'm realizing did not do that in time for this. So the the action item for today, um, would be, you know, ratifying, voting on a letter of support. Because there's no actual letter, um, we have to use some kind of a language like, you know, a letter that the Chair of the Board will draft on behalf of the Board. But we, so long as it is, you know, what we see and we like today, we trust Jenny to write that, we officially voted on it now. Would be the end of this agenda item. Before we dive into it, just kind of contextually, that all makes sense. I just want to make sure we know what playing field we're about to do some sports on. As a bad metaphor. Okay, Hannah, I want to pass it off to you then.
Okay, great. And so again, we've um, obviously been collaborating with August and Melissa and Robert and just trying to identify some of the challenges um, that are maybe stopping our market and how we can react and and um, obviously turn those challenges into opportunities. And so just wanted to kind of set the stage with all the kind of uh, challenges that we are looking at that will drive the strategy. And so again, um, obviously some nec- uh, negative economic impacts on travel. We obviously know that gas prices are spiking specifically in the summertime. We're seeing that with our travel trends currently. Um, so assuming that will continue next year and then just obviously some, you know, travel issues in general with with um, flights. We also know that, um, even though we uh, have been very strategic and re- uh, you know, uh, flexible with what markets we've been speaking to, just like we did with the fly and drive campaigns. Uh, we want to continue to make sure that we are speaking to our regional feeder markets and our, you know, some select longer distant markets. The rationale for that is that we see that even though the regional feeder markets happen to be kind of the the top markets for you guys, they tend to have lower ADRs. And so we want to make sure that we're balancing the quality of uh, the quality with quantity. We also know that with the SkyWest flights, um, that that we're going uh, from Salt Lake and Denver into Moab are going to be reduced or eliminated. Um, obviously, this is based on market adjustments by national airlines, nothing that we can do about it. We want to understand where we can kind of focus on, um, you know, elevating how you can get to Moab. And so obviously, there's those connectors now from Phoenix. So how do we kind of pivot and announce the the different ways to travel to Moab? On the side of domestic, we obviously know that international recovery isn't, um, you know, quite where it should be. We are anticipating that uh, it'll, it'll come into a closer recovery in twenty twenty-six. It's great to hear that we saw some international, you know, plates um, and and travelers so far. That's that's really strong, obviously, in the summer months historically. Um, you know, the the top markets that we pulled for two thousand nineteen for for two quarters were uh, Germany, France, UK. And so uh, we're going to be in Canada, of course, is number one. And so we are looking to have um, a little bit of a carve-out for international, being very, very strategic on an OTA partner. And we're gonna, we're gonna get to that as well. Lastly, we obviously know that time entry has showed us and um, you know, that's where we've spurred our summer campaign that we currently have live, that there hasn't slowed down visitation between July and Labor Day. And so again, this is a summer strategy for twenty twenty-four to really, really focus on what we're calling this new shoulder uh, season to push activity. Um, the reason why we're calling it shoulder season, again, you could, you could argue that, you know, December through February shoulder season. But within the co-op application, they do get um, added points if you're kind of focusing on a shoulder season. So how do we turn these challenges into opportunities? Obviously, want to continue to leverage all of the market insights that we've gained throughout, you know, the last twelve months of our programmatic display and video, our our OTA and our native storytelling, you know, really, really being able to find the right people in the right state of mind and telling that story uh, through visual content. Um, this is where we will be able to drive the greatest return on ad spend in the short term from regional and longer distant markets. And then to complement that, we'll obviously have um, a very competitive and digitally targeted international campaign for that little bit of a longer uh, tail traveler. The way that we will measure, you know, this this uh, media attribution to lower funnel results is continuing our partnership with a DARA impact. Um, this will allow us also to really be able to be flexible and pivot between regional and those East Coast markets uh, using those real-time travel signals. We never, you know, we never set and forget, we're always looking at the data and figuring out where we need to be in order to drive our goals. You know, digital is a wonderful platform, but we also know that there's a lot of uh, opportunity within, you know, the real world. And so we want to complement our digital efficiencies uh, with some programmatic at-home placements, specifically in some theater airports. So we're looking at Philadelphia, Atlanta, Chicago. Again, we don't have the specifics here because our uh, Director of Legacy is reaching out to RFP what's available. Um, and and what that, you know, commitment will be. This will not be, you know, a a six-month uh, long uh, specific flight for at-home. We want to be really strategic and when we want to announce, um, you know, the the flights into Phoenix or or just Moab in general. And so we're looking at if we can leverage kind of programmatic at-home. And what that means is that instead of having just one board above the baggage claim and one airport terminal, we're able to use multiple video um, assets across multiple screens, um, announcing it so that we have that more efficiency. So we're looking into that as a complement to this co-op application. So where does that take us? So we're going to kind of highlight, obviously, the main objective, the the why behind this. So again, bringing all those challenges into the forefront, we want to obviously make sure that we are 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 loud and proud with Moab, with our specific audiences, being very strategic and and convincing and influencing that Moab is the destination. Of course, people are being being very selective on how many trips they're taking and what that destination is. Um, and so through compelling visual storytelling, we want to highlight, obviously, the landscapes, the cultures, the attractions, the outdoor activities and the benefit of connecting to nature. We saw how how important that was during COVID. And our our overall objective, right, is to get heads in beds, but we have to do it strategically through all these different mediums, obviously being aware of those challenges. With that, if we, you know, obviously, we're going after the full match. Um, so we want to be really, really strategic in our market focus. Again, with majority of it going to digital, uh, we want to make sure that we're not casting the 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 net too wide. Um, but we also want to understand, um, you know, the difference between regional opportunities and fly markets. So we're looking at allocating about thirty-five percent of the budget to kind of those regional. A little bit of that will be in-state, as August mentioned, we have a little bit that can go to Salt Lake, is obviously the number one market. But we're looking at uh, Dallas, Houston, Phoenix, Denver, San Fran, LA and Salt Lake. Um, again, where we're getting these markets is looking at a DARA impact. All of these markets, theater and regional are in our top ten. We also are looking at, uh, you know, Visa Review, um, all of all the data that obviously, um, Adam and his team are are aggregating. We're using all of this to make sure that we're we're very selective in the markets that we're going to go after. International, we're going to, um, you know, leverage around a hundred thousand specifically with TripAdvisor. And and the re- reason why we're doing this is that we can be very, very specific in what search terms, what key pages, um, these international audiences are looking at. So a hundred thousand can go a long way when we're doing very specific matching. So we're looking at active travelers, we're looking at, say, Western National Parks, competitive destination, Utah content. Um, the main markets that we're selecting for this is Mexico, specific Western Canada cities, UK, Germany and France. Any questions? Want to make sure that we're addressing them as we go, or we can kind of take a moment after? Okay.
I think we're just getting sidebar feedback that those are good international markets.
Okay, great, okay. Yeah, and we're working obviously closely with Melissa. I should, I should note that for Utah as a tourism, I place all the international for them. And so we're able to kind of piggyback and overlap those strategies and we'll kind of allude to that when we get to those slides. Um, again, the audiences are are really our our backbone audiences. You know, with travel trends, we're seeing that obviously the older generations are a little bit more insulated when it comes to negative economic impacts for for obvious reasons. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're not losing out on anyone just because of, you know, the age brackets that we put on it. We really look at real-time behavioral search signals, um, origin markets, what they're looking for. Um, so when we're looking at empty nesters versus activity-driven planners, we are really covering kind of the older generations uh, as well as those families, um, and those millennials. That are, you know, those adventure activities that might get those guides, that might be able to stay to to spend a a longer timeframe that are also leaving a minimum impact on the environment. So we we feel really good about covering our bases here. And then one thing that we always look at is just those real-time summer travel try uh, contenders. If someone is looking at, you know, a a a destination that's similar to Moab or just Salt Lake City, how can we convince them to tack on a couple of days to come down to Moab? Um, the same thing with our at-home messaging, obviously, those are real-time travelers in that state of mind. And so we'll make sure that we're scheduling those announcements, you know, where it makes the most sense. And we do have a tentative flowchart, so we can kind of put pen to paper. So you can kind of see what this whole strategy looks like. When it comes to domestic, of course, we're going to look at a combination of tactics. Right now, we're looking at a timing about May to August. Again, we're always looking at, you know, from the consumer standpoint, when they're first searching to when they book, to when they arrive. And so we're taking kind of the overall year-over-year booking window into account so that we make sure that we're on early enough to influence them to pick Moab as a consideration set so that their arrival is hitting the time that we need them the most. And so this is going to be um, a market, a mix of regional and fly with, you know, the bulk of the budget going to obviously this strategy around three hundred thousand. Again, if this is, um, if we get the full match. To complement that, we are looking, as I mentioned, to programmatic at-home uh, airport advertising within Philadelphia, Atlanta, Chicago. Obviously, the more that we reach out to these partners to understand the cost, and if they're on the same programmatic network, this might shift. We might have to select one um, market, we might be able to hit all three. The timing, we want to have this overlap, um, you know, so that the 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 perfect world is that someone sees our digital ad, they go to the airport, they also see our airport ad, right? And so our timing tentatively is April through June with a hundred thousand. To complement our domestic feeder markets, we are going to look at international, again, wanting to overlap um, and piggyback off of U two, uh, U UOT's timing. So again, we're we're planning that right now, but we are looking to, um, you know, have an international presence on TripAdvisor from January through April. Again, the way that we're able to do this is look at all of these different markets and the people that are looking at specific keywords. And what we've learned with A B testing, the consumer um, experience, especially with audiences that English isn't their first language. You know, sometimes when you're on TripAdvisor, you click on a banner or you click on a native unit and you pop off of the OTA and you go to a DMO website. We've A B tested keeping them on the page so that they don't leave, lose that consumer, you know, experience. I mean, we we've found that they book at a higher rate, right? I think it's, um, that that seems obvious, but sometimes you want, we need to test these things, right? And so our strategy would be to create a landing page on TripAdvisor that acts as kind of this long listicle for international audiences that we're highlighting, you know, the things that really drive them to uh, select a a destination. And so what we're able to gain there is obviously added page views, added eyeballs, um, you know, added interactions. We're also able to then tie what they did on TripAdvisor when it comes to bookings as well as impact. So we get that dual visibility. And I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, as a, as a example of this, um, the last camp uh, campaign that we did for, um, you know, I believe it was the UK. This is the example for Southern Utah, ten must-see places to explore in Utah. Obviously, Moab uh, was one of those places, but we gained around fifteen thousand page views and people spend an average of five minutes engaging. So they really use this as a tool, an itinerary, um, to use once they book and and while they're booking. Um, and so again, it's going to be a really, really exciting opportunity for Moab to gain additional page views off of their DMO website and then also having that domestic traffic go to discover Moab. So it's definitely a two-pronged approach. Lastly, you know, again, this is where we see um, how we would apply this from from January through August, right? And so we would start with that international opportunity of awareness and inspiration uh, with those key markets. Um, again, the one thing that might change here a little bit is that programmatic at-home when it comes to, you know, securing what times. But it would be an on-and-off approach, um, you know, obviously announcing things, being flexible with that creative messaging. Um, in case, you know, a flight goes down or a new flight comes up, again, being really, really flexible with with those changes. And then we are looking to kind of promote that domestic media mix, um, from April through August to really, really drive um, that that summer visitation, knowing that booking windows for you guys can fluctuate from thirty-five days to fifty days. So we're accounting for that fluidity, um, when we're trying to obviously drive those those main months of visitation. And that is so far our strategy. Would love to hear thoughts on markets or timing or anything that we might have missed that we can include. Love to hear your thoughts. For August or Melissa, if you had anything else that I missed.
No, I mean, Melissa and I.
This is fantastic. Yeah, we were to that at least, uh, I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, this is not the first draft from our side. So I don't have anything else to add. Read all the comments we've made already.
So the way we look at things over the last twenty-four years is where does Jeep Safari land and where does Thelma and Louise land? And it looks like Thelma and Louise is pretty late this year. It's usually third week of March.
Good, the running race.
So however, whomever came up with that strategy, um, good for them because a lot of times people on spring break can't find a place to be or stay if we're so booked up with other activities. So spreading those out, I look at as somebody's doing a good job somewhere.
Well, if everybody loves this, that's great. And uh, then the next, next order of business would be to craft a a creative motion. Uh, that would basically, uh, if folks are in favor, uh, vote uh, support, a letter of support as written by Jenny, uh, capturing this campaign as as, um, described, I'd love here. And I could also say that, if you want me to say that more clearly. Okay, so I guess, let me, let me, let me make sure I'm capturing what I want to have in that motion. So I might write it down really quickly, if you give me one second, so I don't miss anything. Unless, unless Jenny can beat me to it.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Voluntarily yourself to write it?
Yeah.
Well, you you can most, it's right, you're for whatever, much whatever you want.
I make a motion for the Chair of the Travel Council Advisory Board to draft a letter of support for E D V's round twenty twenty-three application to the Utah Office of Tourism Co. Oper- cooperative marketing grants.
I would, before I would, I would add to that, to that motion, that not only asking you to do it, but approving that letter specifically. So that letter is supported and approved by the board. Because the, the action, the action that you described is, go write a letter. But that doesn't mean that.
With the support of the entire board.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would specifically say to to motion to um, approve a letter of support for the grant program as written by Board Chair. If that's, if that's what people understand.
I make a motion to um, the approval for the Chair of the Trump Health Advisory Board um, to draft a letter of support for the E D V's round twenty twenty-three application to the Utah Office of Tourism Cooperative Marketing Grant.
Think that'll serve.
Fantastic. I have a motion from Jenny and a second from Alex during discussion. All right, I'm hearing that. We'll call for a uh, vote. Jenny?
Yeah.
Alex? Laurie?
Yes. Thanks. Yes.
So all favor, no opposed?
All in favor?
But you can't count. Count that better than oh.
All opposed? None? Good.
Good enough. Thank you, Jenny. Um, so, well, okay, so this is the follow up to this before we close this um item is that the more letters of support, the better. Right? So if you own a business and you want to write a letter of support for this grant application, that would be welcome. We'd be happy to write a boilerplate version of that. If you know any other folks um who we think would be supportive of something like this. Uh, we'd go a long way for supporting our application, especially, you know, as as Brian was indicating earlier. You know, there's there, there is competition out there amongst within the state for these various funds and projects. And I think that, you know, it would get, when it come, when the when the grant scoring committee comes down to their last little bits and they have to figure out who's gonna. Get shaved off a little bit here and there, you know, if we have. A avalanche of letters of support, we get the most money most likely. So um we'll probably send out an email blast for our list to to create an opportunity, but just. You know, y'all are the kind of allies in the ring to help us get those letters of support. And so we just craft the. Yeah. And then send it out to our networks and then. That's totally fine. We can, if you want us to do like a boilerplate, we have to write one for the commission anyway, and we distribute that to y'all and not take that from there.
So something that I anticipate is people asking like, kind of like, what will the content look like? If we have any sort of examples of either past that we've done like this, or I don't know how far into the process you are or not, but. That's just something I anticipate, people wanting to know what it's gonna look like.
Um, love, I would, so I would say we distribute that slide deck we just shared, because that'll be what's in the application. And then, um, if we can get maybe like a one cheater with the creativity slide for this year's campaign. Then that's the most up today creative we have. And then people can.
Just the the creative one sheet for the summer campaign that's currently in motion that you're in frame?
Yeah, okay. If you just add that as an addendum to the slide, just the last slide in the um.
Sure.
Deck for the co-op strategy and just say, you know, example creative from the twenty twenty three summer campaign, and then we can just cap it all in one place.
Great.
Okay, with that kind of perfect sutures and a big green hat.
Especially because what, did you mention last year, we didn't get the full amount?
Yes, we were supposed to two twenty five or excuse me, we were supposed to two fifty, I mean, we got two twenty five. No, almost nobody got the two fifty, but that's what I'm saying is like, they have to kind of make the numbers work eventually. And you know, the more the more armor we have, the better, um, to make sure we get the next dollars there. Um, and I think it's an opportunity to demonstrate to our community that this is something we're doing and. Et cetera, et cetera.
You and love present, right?
So yes, well, it would work is that after this meeting, we then go to the the county commission next week and we get a a letter. You know, a statement of support and commitment to the match matching part of the. T R T um that would go into the twenty twenty four budget. Um. Um, and then Melissa and the rest of the staff will work, love to actually. Fill out the application on their like Salesforce platform. And then we, all of the applicants who don't like it automatically disqualified. Um, are invited for interview. Uh, last year I went up and Jonathan from Love and I co-presented, and I think that physically going there makes a difference. So I'd do that again, that'll be in July and then your work announcement's here in August. Um, and so that'll line up well with our twenty twenty four budget process so that we can factor grant awards and matches into our budget next year. Yeah, so that's something very clear.
Is it Utah Office of Tourism that will be giving these grants or a subcommittee?
Great question. So there is the, so the Utah Office of Tourism facilitates the program to make sure it runs well and everything. But there is a subcommittee of the Utah Tourism Board, um, that is the co-op. Can't remember what they call it, panel board subcommittee or something like that. And the five people who are on that board actually in person doing those interviews, uh, and they make the funding recommendation. So it's part of the Utah's for the board technically, which has new members. If you saw the U T there's letters.
Watch out for Washington County.
Yeah, seriously. There's a lot of Washington County on the board.
Really?
I I I see, I. However, Shane Whitworth is on guard, also his property tier. Um, so, you know, he might be St. George adjacent, but he's also. But anyway.
All right, next.
August, we just send that deck directly to you and you'll distribute. Is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, cool.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Have a good one. Take care.
Or you can say. You can say you want. Next up on the agenda is the twenty twenty three C R T budget amendment.
So. Um, there's been a couple of changes to the. To this, um, from what was in the packet. Um, so when this. Goes into public record to make sure they updated information's in there, I distributed. On the full spreadsheet. Physically in the room or such. Uh, and then I created just a slide deck. So we're gonna go over kind of every account level change. So that is, um, this, the the breakdown that's in here has not only each account, but also the sub projects going to each account. Cause I'm convinced with this full, it's really hard to understand what's going on without that. Um, those those sub projects don't end up in the final budget software. Um, you can have something called the worksheets, but when it gets reconciled, the the peer, so this is kind of like. Really more of a planning document. This isn't actually what the budget software is gonna look like. Um, but I'm gonna go over every change. Um, from the original flight I took, but then, right? So contextually, um, generally, there's a, I mean, if you want to talk about why we're doing a budget amendment generally, and then I think people are aware of the changes to T R T laws, but there's also just.
Yeah, so in this case, um. We're taking that second half of the year that would have been diversification. Uh, funding and moving that over into tourism promotion. So that looks like right now we're projecting four hundred eighty one thousand.
Yeah.
So. Part of this budget amendment is incorporating, that's the main part is probably incorporating that money into the budget, maybe have some other changes to.
Yeah.
Moving things around as well, but.
Yeah, so there's that's, it's a kind of a twofold thing. A, there's money that was going to be spent on other things that can no longer be spent on other things that we have to incorporate. Um, into the budget. And then there's just mid-year adjustments that have come up along the way, um, that need to just be accounted for. Makes our lives easier, but it reflects reality. So I'll go through these, uh, none of the, there's maybe a handful of things that are new, but we pretty much covered almost all of this at least once. Um, but I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on what's in here. Um, and then, you know, I'll be taking this, I think ideally we'll get uh uh an action. Making any comments or otherwise appreciating this change. So again, so that forty one, which is the top line number is basically with additional on top of what was previously approved. Um, so I'm just gonna go top to bottom. So, um, this is super minor, basically small overtime costs um that got paid out, so we want to make sure that that's covered in the budget. Um, we've got, um, and stop me at any time, I think this is the time, as we're going through this to af- after I have explained the change, uh, to answer your question. So any questions on that seven dollar, eight dollar increase? Smooth all Steve. Yeah, I know.
Who authorized that?
I I clearly missed it. Yeah, when you budget, no overtime, Chris likes me to not pay overtime, so that's that's totally on me.
Well, I.
Yeah, totally true. Um, okay, so under the travel category, a couple of changes that add up to two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, adding budget to support a travel council board member, we've talked about having the Chair of the Board join us at the tourism conference. Um, that's within step statutorily allowable to have here to cover the travel expenses for board members in this case. Um, we added a budget to to have an extra staff person go to tourism down the hill, which is in January. Um, have an additional staff person in the outdoor recreation summit, which is in September up in Ogden. Um, and then added Esto to the conference calendar, which is um a big. Uh, tourism marketing uh conference. Um, and so, uh, Melissa had added this to the request, we actually haven't followed up on this, but I assume you still want to go to that. Great, okay. So those are the four changes and the and the itemized cost changes are are detailed in your in your packets here. Any questions on? On that? Here none, I'll move on. Um, administrative services, so. Um. Twenty, I guess, Chris, can you explain this? This is the, this is the amount of money that goes to offset. Um, the audit or accounting costs?
The general funds provide services like H R payroll, uh, just general administration. And so I do a calculation uh per F T E, those costs, and then I multiply that. And cost per F T E, if I have any F Ts are in the department, and that's how I come up with the number for that. So it's just compensation for what the general, the general fund is providing to economic development.
Right, so this basically helps offset making sure that property taxpayers aren't paying for our office's portion of H R accountable.
Yeah, it helps keep uh property taxes down.
But also that each department is paying their way.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, is that for just the economic development department or is that, do you do that for other departments?
All those departments that are not in the general fund.
Right.
So it'd be like roads, um, sand flats. Active transportation and trails, just any department that's sort of separated out from the general fund.
Got it.
Cause all those services are paid for in the general fund. And so it's like a transfer just to cover those costs.
What about like the sheriff's office? I'm just curious. Okay, so does the portion that. T R T that goes there will be up since that as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I don't, if it if they're already in the general fund, then I don't. It's just for the the departments that are not in the general fund but are receiving general fund service.
Right, cool. So, um, the reason why this is being put into this budget is because it was, there is a, there's a host of, um, general office costs. That were distributed across, um, economic diversification expenditures and kind of tourism expenditures. Cause the H R cost to manage, you know, myself and Ben, uh, yeah, uh, Melissa is the same cost. So just tried to make that equitively split between the two. Departments, but now that spend is, doesn't exist anymore. So there's a handful of these that are just general department needs that were budgeted in the other side of the budget that need to come over here. Over here to the tourism side of the budget. So that's a good example of that one. Um, any questions? Um. Fuel costs, so, um, another cost that was baked into the other side of the budget that covers gas or driving the county cars around town to do our business. Any questions there? Yeah. Equipment lease, um, so this, um, is another one. We had the, um, our uh vehicle lease payments on the economic diversification side of the budget. Um, so brought that over into, um, this side of the budget. And so that's, that's where the twelve thousand dollars comes from. Any questions anywhere? Did I get the number right?
What line is that?
So. So that they should be, so that the third number group should be out, it should be in descending order.
It's all, okay.
You found it?
Yes.
Yep, no worries. Um, professional services, um, a couple of small changes here that are detailed in the, uh. I'm gonna have to stop saying that cause it's detailed everywhere. Um, increase of two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty eight cents. Couple of changes include a small increase in costs for a new email manager for MailChimp to a platform called Emma. Um, there, the, we had Wander Maps, uh, contract costs paid out of this line. And we moved two thousand dollars from a different line item. Um, that was not going towards anything, it was unanticipated costs. Um, come over here. And then there was also an additional, um, dollars, oh, you know, that's that was by it's wrong.
I was gonna say, I don't see it twenty five sixty anywhere.
So, okay, so there's, it was twenty seven? Sixteen?
Forty seven. You're.
I see forty seven sixty.
Oh, you know what? Want to look at this right here.
Maybe it adds.
Now, so what happened was.
Is that orange?
So it's down, it's down twenty two hundred. So so the changes are, since I put it into this slide deck. Um, is. If you look down on the. The CrowdRift contract amount was, oh, no, that's wrong, the.
So has email management's a hundred dollars?
That's correct. Yeah, so everything that you see on the packet is correct. So so what's wrong is in the slide deck.
Okay.
Um, so so the numbers still add up, basically. This should, the one seventy one should be one seven three six eight eight twenty, as is in the packet, and the change should be four thousand seven sixty six. Yeah.
Okay.
So that was just, there's a small change, um, clearly, since I wrote that to a.
What is the Crowdrift?
Okay, CrowdRift, um, is a, um, it's basically a platform that allows, um, our department to crawl publicly posted images that tag Moab. Um, and it gives off the interface to say, hey, person who posted this real great photo that we'd like to use on our whatever. Um, you know, like, allow us to license this image uh for our website. Whatever. And so it's basically a content generation platform. Um, it's a subscription basis. Um, so I, that just came up for renewal, um, so that's why there's two costs, because the cost structure changed a little bit. Uh, and so we, I spoke with Melissa and Robert about this contract, uh, because they use it. Um, and see if that felt like valuable, then Melissa, do you want to speak to that?
We were thinking like at the beginning, maybe to cancel this, but then we will figure out how much is to pay a photographer. A long photographer to do all the activities. So we feel that this is cheaper. We divide this in by monthly, so it's super cheap. And that one thing is I pull, uh, pictures or videos from reality. It's real content, and I just ask for permission if I can use the picture. And when I use on social media, I just make a credit for that big, that that person. So it's it's really fun, uh, we we really like it. You can pull a lot of pictures, just, so what you want is Crowdrift. Say they buy a G P S, all the people that are in more, and they upload the pictures on Instagram, Facebook, and then I ask for permission to use that.
What's your success rate in your requesting and where do we see those postings?
Um, on our social media, we use on our social media also advertising with a lot of communication. They use our picture. Um, the successful is probably like fifty percent. Not everybody say yes. But we have fifty percent of these, they say yes. And I think that Crowdrift, because they were putting pictures that wasn't accurate with more. So in these couple of years, they are having better quality of about all. The only thing that I don't have dealing with Crowdrift is. Like a sustainable feature in the way that people recycling something, uh, I don't know, feature like, that's why we kind of put all of those kind of. Pictures, even more landscape pictures. People having fun around.
Well, and I would also add that I think this is like. We're not, when we're not looking for something very particular and we just need content. Uh, this is a great resource. And Melissa, this is cheaper than a photographer, and I I should say that we're not. Using this in lieu of local talent and artist work that you have, look further down in the budget, which we'll get to. Uh, we're trying to increase the amount of work, um, as local talent that we're contracting with to get that kind of next level tier quality and of specific. Um, types of things we're looking for, special event content that we can use. Um, videos that are tailor made for campaigns for social, uh, and, you know. Uh, collateral that is of a lower can use for advertisements.
Do we have any rules? For use or not use? Are there certain kinds of pictures that are written or unwritten that we're allowed to use or not use? There are certain types of recreating that we don't like, that we don't want to use those pictures? Are we posting those pictures?
Uh, I don't have any policies like that to that I'm aware of. Um, cool. Uh, I think, I think I captured it. Were there any questions on the sub sub items there? There's a couple, there's a couple of kind of small ones in there. So yeah, there's the the, basically the CrowdRift contract adjustments, um, adjustments to the Wander Maps. Um, we had some twenty two hundred dollars in costs that were basically. Um we had some twenty two hundred dollars in costs that were basically Robert's uh utilizes for website management, program updating, that hadn't been captured anywhere in the budget up to this point. So I wanted to make sure that everything we're expecting to pay out during this central organization that it's butted. Um so that's, that's that category, and apologies for the mistake here for those two numbers. The spreadsheet is is correct. Who not? Memberships, um adding to memberships on National Tour Association, which is the bus tour group. Do you want to speak to that, Melissa?
Well, um this year we decided not to do that because of the budget reason, but then if we got increased, I was talking with the Utah Office of Tourism and we see Lisa. And now you have the reservation, uh the artist reservation, and we have more tour buses coming more. So why you don't have the membership, the uh the ATA? And I say, oh, well, I have the possibility to do that, and they increased my budget. Why not? So this is a membership that we had that, we had that for a long time ago, and then because of budget, we decided to cut it. We have the possibility again to recover that. Yeah, yeah. And same with leave no trace, uh this is a part of it. All the, all the DMOS are part of this year, we need to participate. Something that we need to.
Any questions on that? Cool. Okay, staff engagements. This is another line item that got moved over from economic diversification category. Um this is, is basically gives us budget for if we're doing staff appreciation. If we're um doing a team lunch, if we're doing um stuff of that nature that we don't just have like a random discretionary fund, which we can't have, um that's being clear how much money is we can spend on stuff like that. Uh we also have, um so for the responsible recreation advertising line. Um I added this in to reflect the discussion that happened kind of between this body and the county commission with regards to that increased summer um campaign budget. Um travel council board recommended that three hundred thousand dollar campaign. The county commission with Mary's motion um recommended a two fifty um campaign. There was some back and forth between folks who wanted a two hundred thousand dollar campaign and folks who wanted a three hundred thousand dollar campaign. And and Mary's motion kind of offered a compromise of, okay, let's do two fifty towards the summer campaign and hold fifty for some responsible recreation campaign to yet to be decided. Um and so this is where I kind of captured that fifty thousand dollars in the in the budget. Um to reflect that discussion, though it's not dedicated towards anything specific use at this point. But I wanted to make sure that that was caught. Any questions on that? All right, cellphone allowance. So um because we all as staff use our cellphones for work, county has a policy that allows reimbursement for that on our payroll. Um this was also general office costs that was put on the economic diversification side of the budget and brought with the tourism side of the budget. Um on the key, under community engagement, um so there's two pieces here. Um one straightforward is we had a budget line to cover community event costs such as workshops. A lot of meetings, things that we're doing in the community that might require us to book, buy food or book space. Um to do kind of community engagement, that five thousand dollars was in the economic diversification half, brought it over. The bigger piece here is um all of the special event grants, we already went through that process this year. We gave out sixty seven thousand five hundred total. Um. Uh were given in the form of the community event grants. Um and so uh for this budget amendment, I zeroed out the special event grant line um and transferred all of those costs into the community event side of things. So all of the event grants um that were approved at the past couple of meetings are accounted for under this account. And that was mostly because there was a smaller match requirement for the recipients of those grants. And commission, official administration, but since we had taken kind of a long time to get those out the door, that was the best way to go with programs. Does that make sense?
I'm confused because it seems like those events should have been covered with the budgeted amount that would have been taken care of in the first six months. So we're transferring expenses to which community is it?
So there's two lines, if you look at account number uh sixteen forty twenty eight twenty special event grant. There was originally about a forty thousand for that, you seen that? And then under community engagement, one of the sub items is the community event grant. So that would be forty eight twenty six hundred, a couple lines up. Um that was originally budgeted for forty thousand, so the total budget for both community and special event grants was eighty thousand dollars this year. The the travel council board recommended, the county commission approved sixty seven five hundred of that. Um and elected not to um kind of allocate that final twelve five. If that makes sense. So so all of the grants that were given out are going to be captured in that community engagement um line. Uh and uh the the next one, well, maybe it's not the next one, but in a minute, the county fair got funded in a separate line item uh for fifty. So basically, that twelve five that didn't get spent in this year's budget will be spent somewhere else uh in the budget this year. During the special event process. Is that clear? Clear enough? Clear, clear enough for for today's purposes. Um inventory, so this is um basically office supplies, costs um for a department. I believe inventory specifically is in Peter.
Uh yeah, it'd be like unconsumable items that are individually less five thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay. So again, this was budgeted on the other side of the budget, had to bring it over to the side of the budget. Um we wanted to update the mid contribution budget because it did not reflect originally the contract that was signed at the end of twenty twenty two. Um and we also had had discussion with with Sharon at the last meeting. Um we had originally considered um five thousand dollar on top of kind of typical um uses of the or the deliverables from the MIC to us as a county in that contract. To do some tech upgrades to help facilitate um the booking of in time entry reservations and the watching of the OHB. Yeah, the OHB video, and then it sounded like it wasn't a use. So anyway, we just kind of absorb that and zero that line out. Um specifically, so you can see under, under, under eight, four, sixteen forty eight twenty eight ten. Basically, the the two pieces of the new contract. New contract captures the contract and the bathroom hours extension, which is usually part of the contract is zeroed out, and then make program technology operators is zeroed out. So that net change is five thousand three seventy five. We talked about the special events grant change. Um county fair, we talked about that, so county commission approved that fifty thousand dollars county fair, which is gonna happen, which is really excited about. Angie is super stoked on, it's the first time in two decades apparently that we've had a county fair. Um.
Big one.
Big one, starting in two weeks, not this weekend, but next weekend, all the way running through July four. Um Moab Grant um zeroed out this program, uh explained this kind of last time, but we had relatively low engagement in this program last year. And given that we're kind of currently understaffed when it comes to developing new business oriented programs. Um it was unlikely that we'll develop that program this year. Doesn't mean that we won't do something like that in the future, doesn't mean that the planning process won't recommend some kind of entrepreneurial support for tourism businesses. But not in for this particular line item for this particular year. Any questions on that?
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna go back to this special event just real quick.
For sure.
Does that mean?
Which one?
That's the the community events especially that we combined.
Yep.
Does that mean that that money has not been allocated out yet?
Uh what do you mean by allocated?
I don't know, has a big. Cause in my mind, and I know I'm wrong, it seems like it's being budgeted in the first half of the year and the second half of the year.
So, so great question. So at the last meeting, and I could pull this document up, it'd be useful. Uh it, we talked about all the money that had been given, which was sixty seven thousand five hundred to a number of organizations.
Yeah.
The twelve five that we weren't gonna get out.
Yeah.
Uh and then the way that the program has run year after year is that we start the application window at the end of the summer. There's a following budget here, because people are planning there, that's ahead of time. So it's actually not in this budget year, but that process starts at the end of summer. This year, um the county is getting a new special, well, not this year, next week, the county getting a new special that permit person. And that person's going to not only do the permitting, but also use event grant stuff. And so when they come on board, they're gonna be caught up on how this program has run in the past. How it's worked well, how it's worked not so well. And then it'll be their charge to start that process and make sure the child council board is aware and involved, because they have been.
Ones that have improved, right?
Well, the ones that have improved have been um, everything that needs to happen from the decision making standpoint, from the county commission has already happened. So everything else is between our office and the clerk's office, making sure the grant contracts are signed. Uh getting those grant checks to the recipients of the of the um the grants and doing the follow up and the reporting and all that kind of stuff. So basically, from a budget standpoint, done invested. That makes sense, that makes sense. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay. Do you have a question?
No, I just love it that you said there's a follow up process.
Yep.
And so just help me understand where I can see that.
So um probably the best way to look at it is in the grant contracts, which were in the kind of commission packet. I can pro, I can follow up if you send me like a email separately.
Sure.
I can send you a sample contract with the, you know, details retracted and say, here's what the reporting parts are.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to do that. But if you don't send me the email, I will forget.
I, that's right.
Or I can ask Sky to remind me, that's that's Sky's job now. Part of it, I don't mean to reduce your role. Um, okay.
Okay, sorry.
You're great. Okay, so then data, this increase we already talked about extensively. So if there's no, no follow up, I'm just gonna.
Sorry to be a pain here.
Be a pain.
In the previous stuff that I had sort of been diving into over the weekend, I see so much budget for data that seems to be duplicated.
Okay.
And I'm hoping that it's just not. And like, it looks like we're um contracting for data collection from USU um from Wayne, somebody Wayne State or something. And I'm hoping that what we're doing with Loves is going to be overarching and getting all that. And we won't have to spend that money with those places, so we are not spending money. And then we can put money towards cooler stuff.
For sure. Yeah, so maybe I can capture all of the lines and make sure that we're on the same page, was going towards it. So you go up to professional services, it's just three ten. Um so it might be on the front page. Second page. Uh there is. I think people online, but um there's data insight management for thirty grand. That's four, four lines down from total. So that thirty thousand dollar cost is, that is, that is contract time that is in Love's budget to actually have Adam spend his time out of his limited schedule. And we are buying his time so that he can help us put together all the best resources, so that's what that is. The the visitation research, which is Wayne USU, has not been expended yet. Um so the intention between putting that in the budget was, we have all of these indicators of visitation, but no one true number. We have highway data, we have Arches National Park invitation, all these different places, but wouldn't it be useful to have one true number that's like how many people came? And so the intention there was not necessarily to work with Wayne, but that was part of the conversation. But to figure out, can we do a, develop a model of visitation that uses all these inputs that we're buying? So that we can have one true, one, well, there's no true, but a model of visitation that's one single number. So that hasn't been contracted yet. But I, but that's to me distinct from these other projects that are valuable.
So that's distinct from what Love's um scope will be.
Yeah, so this isn't, that is not contracted with anybody yet, that's kind of.
Will that also be data that, like the love data that we as business owners and as community members will have access to, to try to wrap our heads into to?
So the vision of that would be, you had to do the data science and behind the scenes to figure out, you know, all of the different inputs that we have access to, turning that into one useful visitation number, and then putting that modeled number as a part of the public dashboard.
So even the parks could use that, some other public good.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, this, it's all gonna be public good.
Absolutely, yeah. So I mean, so for me, that kind of research would also allow us to figure out, you know, what is the leading driver of visitation? If you take all of these multi, multiple variables, maybe it's just weather, if it's gas prices. Uh if you build a, a, to use, I can't remember, multivariate regression, you can look at each of the variables and see how they act. So that's something that we're working on, but hasn't been contracted yet.
And then the USU one is where?
That, that is that one, last year. Yeah, last year in the twenty twenty two budget, we contracted with um Wayne's department to do an evaluation of the Trail Ambassador Program. And to summarize all of these visitor use management surveys that are being done at the various land management units and to provide policy briefs to this department, which is the county at large. That hasn't been completed yet, uh but we're contracted with them, so that's. From Wayne's inside that.
And you.
He's, he's, he's not here, he's not here.
But you expect that those results will be coming.
Some.
The data analysis that we've paid for.
We will come back to this board for sure. Yeah, so we haven't, we have no results that we're like, I didn't have that, we just don't have, it hasn't come back yet. Um and then the last one that I think is relevant specifically is the visitor slash resident survey, so that twenty five thousand dollar line in that same category. Um and I think this will, we're figuring out how to incorporate this into our planning. But under, having a kind of a ongoing understanding of unbiased visitor perceptions of our area to help us do planning. Um what is our resident sentiment and what is the business sentiment? Um so this only covers those two, but that's, that's would be the cost to actually create our own dataset of what do people think, right? And so um so there's a cost to actually do the data consulting and help us do that work and do the reporting. There's creation of additional data resources, modeling of a visitation number, and then the actual costs, hard costs to go file that stuff. And I, I, I think that's all of the, all of the pieces that are in the budget, unless I'm mistaken. So I hope that that is illustrative of um how, I don't think it's duplicative, but I'd be happy if I'm missing something.
No, it explains a lot, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. So that's change the data, is what was approved at last meeting or recommended in the technical group and being implemented now. Um on paid media, we talked about this last time also. Um that increase of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the summer campaign is incorporated into there. There's also the increased burden on on our side of the match for the co-op fly market campaign, and we just got the report on earlier today. Um and because of the grant word changes that I discussed at the last meeting, uh where we underspent in the past uh due to COVID, uh now uh we're basically not getting that money now. That's how it works, because we're getting balanced on the books with these offices towards them from their grant giving. So so I wanted to make sure that we are planning accordingly for that change. Uh we had some discussion over that last time, maybe we probably could dive deeper if people have more questions, but.
I'm curious about the accountability, that's just a mess up, we just messed up.
Um, yeah, I don't, I mean, I wasn't here at the time that happened.
Well, I mean, we couldn't have attacked twenty twenty, so I don't know.
But we had two years after that, we could have used that money had we been on our game, and we clearly weren't.
Yeah, and you know, I I can personally own that. It's been a big uphill learning curve about the co-op stuff and who managed it, how do we invoice grants? So like, I'm happy to take at least a measure of responsibility for that. Uh we'll deduct it out of your paycheck, sounds good.
Is, if you were a business owner, you wouldn't just say, oh, it's seventy nine thousand dollars, oh, well.
Right, we also were. Right there. Yeah, we also were not notified until this January, when the person who was running this program gave us a heads up that this is how these numbers add up. And that's the, there's, there's their solution, so totally heard.
Well, I mean, we, I feel like as body, we have a accountability.
Totally. No, I think that's a point I'll take again. Um additionally, uh we've got uh that the two thousand dollars in unanticipated cost that got moved to cover the Wander Maps contract, as previously discussed. Um and then Melissa requested uh that additional forty thousand dollars to go towards international marketing uh projects um that, my understanding was you had a conversation with the state and said what should this stuff be?
It's more for the cold marketing international uh campaign that we are doing, we always did just Canada. And now we want to use them anymore to bring international back, so now it's Canada, Australia, New Zealand, and then now I want to do in UK to.
And so when Melissa said co-op, might be confusing with the co-op grant, it's cooperative, it's okay. It's cooperative in that this is us working with a campaign the state's already doing within the travel trade industry. So this is dollars that is going towards um. So this is dollars that is going towards um, basically educating um, you know, uh, travel advisors, travel agents, uh, doing incentives to that kind of program. So it's not direct to consumer marketing. This is getting the people who are doing the booking on behalf of other travelers, get them in our market. Um, so distinct from the type of marketing we talked about earlier, that's, you know, adding to my eyeballs and then I go to. Does that make sense? Okay, I'll move on. Um, under earned media increase, um, ten thousand nine hundred and four, same, same notion. This is basically our cost. Um, when uh, the state is bringing in a social media influencer, a journalist. Um, anybody that is going to generate media that we're not necessarily buying, not buying ad space. But they're talking about us in media, right? And so uh, that is typically with regards to helping to pay for someone's hotel, meals, transportation. So this was a, you know, once again, similar Melissa kind of requested this increase. And helps us partner with ETOs and tours. And we're not necessarily going out of our way to go solicit these folks. But making sure that when the state brings a really high quality person to our area that we're able to make that, like host guy, basically. Um, under owned media, um, the change, the change as written in the budget. Includes. Includes kind of zeroing out the, the budget categories that were kind of used to, to build this in the first place. So those, the video content development, social media content development, podcasts and written. Those were kind of our concepts going into this year. So then we come up with the number. What that has come out to be um, is projects with Mark Finley to develop new video contents. Um, get some new time lapse content, um, project with two local creators. Uh, Max Heimowitz and Tyson, Tyson Swayze to shoot some video and photo for us. Um, and then also to edit um, some videos that this is the main change here. Is to capture some additional uh, costs uh, for video edits.
Close this separate from the project they just finished.
Um, well, so in the, in the, in the line item section, there's a handful of these that most of this is that was went through that agenda item that was project that were finished that needed edit. There is two videos that were kind of hanging from last year. Um, that I wasn't aware it was costs.
Okay, so I mean, the project that he just, and Andrea Brand's gonna put it on the agenda for next week, but.
Yeah, so some of the editing costs for that, for example, because he's been working on that.
But I was gonna expense it out of responsible rec from twenty forty seven.
Okay.
Which is um, sort of what a lot of that money was intended for.
Sure.
Yeah, so just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, happy to do that.
So, but it just depends on whether or not that ten thousand is intended to cover that project or something else. That's what I guess I'm trying to, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm waiting for follow up on Mark. Item by item.
But, uh, all right, yeah, let's follow up with that.
Okay.
So August, Mark Finley does phenomenal footage of landscapes. Any chance he might be able to highlight some restaurants that we were proud of?
It's a great question. So the project we're gonna do with maps.
Possibly be highlighted as part of our cool community coffee shops. We have so many cool things.
Yeah, so, so the project that's here, that's the Max Heimowitz project. The, the point, the notion there is to highlight our local business community and basically do a social media campaign that's selecting a handful, doing a social media forward, uh, kind of little piece of a video series, do a portrait series and put that on our discovery page because, I mean, people who do different stuff, and you're right, Mark, doesn't really do that. Great question. Yeah, so we're working on designing contracts for it. Yeah. Um, okay, I'm gonna keep moving. Uh, travel trade shows, we've got um, an increase in four thousand seven fifty. Um, so that's basically increased cost for each IPW Go West and IITA that Melissa is seeing as she's booking and doing these things. Place is a part of it. I mean, what. Um, same for international sales missions, um, currently going to, went to Canada, are going to Switzerland. Um, this probably doesn't need to be in this whole account, but there's a small cost um, attributed towards printing some info boards on our time entry in several languages at both the airport and the MIC. Uh, and then um, ultimately had a, had a negative balance after putting all of this in of uh, five thousand thirty three eighty eight and took that out of website costs that we were planning to help develop a lot of Stuart module and flexible money um, that we could potentially just push to next year and so that's right to count. Today, but all of those costs end up to a net change of an increase of four hundred and eighty one thousand one sixty nine and says as our forecast look like. So, um, there's no, I guess, last kind of opportunity for questions or recommendations or and discussion on this on. The, the, yeah, the website, yeah, exactly, the spreadsheet that's on the agenda um, is. And we'll make sure that that's in the packet.
I just wanna say that two hundred dollars you spent on those posters. Well, money was spent.
Um, I kind of liked what Chris said about putting the, you know, some of those videos and whatnot in the responsible record. And especially really have that kind of like additional fifty thousand that we don't know what we're doing with. And then maybe some of this on the media or some of that money or whatever could go to some more business specific old spotlights.
I was just gonna say, despite what's gonna happen with commission and whether it moves to the foundation or not, there's nothing added in here for the vote commission. And I think at that public hearing, it was very loud that there needs to be more resources allocated to that. And should that not happen, we're missing out here. I mean, it was clearly stated that website needs to be updated better, clearly vegan needs to get out, network more. And none of that's reflected in us. Well, you guys partner with us on that.
Yeah, but I'm saying if it doesn't happen.
Right, it's not.
There needs to be a plan B.
Yeah, so, well, the, the issue that we have is statutory, actually, and so we've got. So there's a tourism promotion, which is really unrestricted, which is what we just. Yeah, and then separately in statute, there's uh, promotion, establishment of recreation film and conventions. And that's limited to no more than one fifth of the total, thirty seven percent of TRT. We've already maxed that budget out at one fifth.
And so even with the amount that needs to go back into tourism.
Well, see, the tourism part doesn't affect that at all. Yeah, because we're already maxed out at the one fifth. We're, you know, as much as we can go on the dumb fit. And so what that means is that, you know, the other components that are in that budget, which would be like new sports programming for um, through the rec district, responsible rec program, trail ambassadors. Those would have to get cut to increase the film budget. Cause we're maxed out statutorily on those things. And where is that? I mean, I've looked for that. I can't find that amount, like that percentage.
In statute?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can.
Give you a reference here in a second.
Well, maybe that's off my follow up.
No, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I mean, you don't even like right now. I would just like to see it, so.
Yeah, for sure. That was a good question. Um, and so, yeah, operationally, there's those three big buckets within our corner of TRT. And everything that would be coming out of the economic diversification is what's moving over. So there's no change into that rec film and conventions tier. That makes sense. Um, I think that. Yeah, so, you know, again, I, I'm not, I don't. The, the question of could money out of this establishment promote tourism category used towards film production activities? It's a question I don't have any answer to. So if, if, you know, the child council board wanted to do more film based investment, maybe, maybe can't go to like the direct operations of the film commission, but could you like, uh, film tourism thing or special events, yeah, those kinds of places that supports kind of film as a subset of our tourism strategy. Um, but not directly funding the film commission would be my guess.
I mean, one place to look, I guess, would be how, how is St. Louis offering that? They're doing it through their tiers, but they're doing it somehow.
Yeah.
I don't know.
No, I already did. Yeah, okay, so you got the, yeah.
We're not ready.
Yeah. I keep saying that, but I, I really do hear you better. Um, so as we develop our twenty twenty four budget, um, which will then consume the rest of our year, um. Think, look, you know, I, I think I'm open to thinking creatively about ways to put in various tourism projects into the establishment, another part of the budget. Um, if it's statutorily restricted, then we can't spend um, those funds towards film commission.
I mean, if nothing else, but the, that all the anniversaries are gonna be happening next year.
I think it's a perfect example.
Into the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah, so let's plan on it. So, yeah. Yeah.
Amazing the budget for this year's, probably not gonna make this happen, but looking forward into twenty twenty four. How do we put in a request for a budget item? For example, I feel it's so important to let the public know where these dollars are being spent. I mean, you've heard me say this before. How is our community benefiting? And Chris is here, he's the expert on this, but the revenue that restaurants collect and so many businesses in that TRCCA that alleviates a little bit of pressure off that general fund. So we don't have to raise property taxes. I would love the community to feel that they get some benefit from the burden and the negative externalities that are coming their way because they can't turn left in May. I want them to know the benefits that are coming by sharing their community. But if they don't understand that, they're just gonna be angry. And I'm tired of everybody being angry of, they're biting the hand that's feeding them. And if we can put in a budget item so that we can maybe find a way to communicate that to the public through um, some sort of signage, some sort of notice and awareness paid for by this. I, I feel like maybe the tempo could just calm down.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that we could put together, we have to generate a report every year on how we spend the money and what it goes to. Although it's not the most digestible probably for the general public, but we could like, you know, put it into a slideshow. Cause then it, or, you know, just make some PDFs out of it. Like the TRSCU, which is the restaurant current tax, I mean, that one's pretty simple. Most of it goes to uh, funding Old Smash Trail Arena and the Grand Center. Lion share of it. Um, the TRT is obviously much more complicated. And then, you know, the benefits of the TRT uh, would be realized through the data programs that we're contracting for. And that, like, uh, for instance, the, any reports that the film commission would generate, you know, from there and so we'd have all this data showing uh, economic benefit, you know, certainly on that side of things.
Yeah, but, but I think in terms of activating that recommendation, I think there's two venues to do that. Should be the twenty twenty four budget planning process. It's gonna start in August. It's when I have to get an initial um, pile up new numbers to Chris. Uh, by no means the final one, but that'll, you know, just probably be, it's all in that process. And then secondarily is this, is this, you know, very broad planning exercise that we're gonna be doing. Uh, in which we're gonna talk about all this kind of stuff. Um, so I think both would be a good place to capture that. But I think you're right. You know, trying to figure out how to put that into.
It's a hard one. I remember Elaine had, oh, at least three or four a fight time that she met once at the library to explain people what was going on. She met once at the uh, mark and once at the, you know, at the senior center. I mean, it's in. And there's been a lot of articles in the paper and it's hard to get people to hear.
Yeah.
It's hard. We gotta, that would be really nice if we could figure out creative way for them to hear the information.
Seems like you have to like, you're in a way that applies to our locals.
Right, that's exactly what it is. We have like this. We need like a community education.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. And believe it or not.
I have a red tail, honey. Um, sorry, I did jerk.
Do, well, do you wanna call voted for recommendation of this budget then? Get that done with and we can, we can follow up on this conversation.
Make a motion that we recommend the changes in the budget in the twenty, is this twenty twenty four? Free budget, um, the changes that were explained to us today.
There any other just, a motion from Sharon. I have a subject to Alex. If there are any other discussion. Very none. I will call for the vote. On favor. Jenny.
Did we get, was, was that all in favor? Was there any abstain?
Any abstain?
No.
All right, and like they during this meeting. Um, and Brian, this sheet was from, I think, September. I have it from like the budget and I just listed like.